We are going to move to our third and final bill for this hearing. And that is Bill 21-0033, Amari's LGBTQ Procurement Preference Act, for the purpose of creating an LGBTQ Business Enterprise LGBTQBE program to be administered by the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, defining certain terms, establishing the eligibility requirements for firms seeking to participate in the LGBTQBE program, establishing revocation criteria for firms in the LGBTQBE program, authorizing the city to employ various affirmative procurement initiatives to promote the award of city contracts to LGBTQBEs, requiring annual reports on the LGBTQBE program, requiring periodic changes on and review of the LGBTQBE program, requiring for the appeal of certain adverse determinations by the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, setting certain penalties, correcting, confirming, and clarifying related provisions, renumbering certain sections, and generally relating to the city procurement requirements. This bill was introduced on February 8, 2021, by Councilmember Odette Ramos. And I want to open the floor to Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Thank you for taking the time today. I'm introducing or I'm bringing to you today Amari's LGBTQ Procurement Preferences Act. I did submit written testimony. This bill codifies an existing executive order from 2018. And also, which I had submitted as part of my testimony, and you can see on Legistar what that executive order was. My constituent, Terrence Throughweet Jr., who is going to be testifying today, came to me and asked for help in putting this in. It is very important to him because his sibling in Mari was a business owner, small business owner, and in the trans community, and discriminated a lot, was discriminated against a lot. And so this is something that we're putting in his memory and also making sure that we're able to provide opportunities in government contracting for sexual and gender minorities in our city. And other cities do this. Nashville, New York City, Miami, and a few others. I also appended to my testimony a list of other cities that have similar programs. What this particular bill does is it creates the LGBTQBE program that mirrors the current WBE and Small Business and MBE program, so that it would be a parallel program. Embu would manage the program, would conduct a baseline disparity study, so that we can't actually give any contracts or create any goals until there is a disparity study to see what kind of disparity is there and how to create those goals. There'd also be reporting, and then there's an appeals process and certification requirements. So again, this is an opportunity for our city to continue our work around equity and also provide opportunities for members of our community that don't always have the same opportunities. In answering some of the reports, and I appreciate all the agencies getting their reports and the thought and time that you took on them. Many of you we met with, and I'm grateful to be meeting with all of you. In some cities, the LGBTQ program, the certification is not done by the agency. It is done by the chamber. So that could allay some of the fears from the Finance Department in terms of cost if we went in that direction. And then there are a few other things in other reports that I can certainly answer to once we hear from the reports. But it looks like, you know, we won't be voting this out today, but I look forward to working with the committee and the agencies to get this bill right, so that we have more opportunities for members of our community that don't always get the same opportunities. I really appreciate everyone's time. I want to also point to some testimony that you received in your packet from Senator Mary Washington, who wholeheartedly supports the legislation, and will be hearing from others during testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. We're going to move on to agency reports. So I'm going to ask, once again, as agency representatives, speak up for your respective agency. Please state your name for the record. First, we're going to start off with the Law Department.
Hi, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley on behalf of the Law Department. We put in a bill report to support such a program so long as there's a disparity study. I think there's a little confusion here. The executive order that was in place before just said, "To the extent currently possible", and it invited an ordinance to address this. And so obviously, this would be a type of ordinance that the executive order invited. I also think there's a little confusion about the other cities. For example, New York City asks LGBTQ businesses to bid as a small business. So I don't know whether these other cities have done the disparity study, whether they feel like they need one. I can't answer that. I just know that they're not actually, in all instances, a separate program. Nashville's executive order just says, again, "To the extent possible". I really haven't had time to look at the other cities. But certainly, there would be the legal ability to have such a program so long as a disparity study was done to make sure that it meets the requirements of the Constitution. I know Embu has disparity studies that are done every couple of years just to solidify the minority aspect. And something similar would be best practices here. I also know we have a small business program at the moment that we don't operate because I think it's some source issue. There wouldn't be a charter problem here. The charter certainly provides for disadvantaged businesses. The issue here would be the study that proves the businesses are disadvantaged, and then continues that study over time to see if, you know, as time goes on, if they continue to be. So I mean, essentially, the Law Department would be happy to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency, but I don't think that it would be able to operate until such a study were done. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Hillary. We'll save questions until the end. Next, we've got the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office.
Good afternoon, members of the council. This is LaShella Miller, Chief with the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office. Embu does acknowledge and support the opportunity that the inclusion bill will create. But there is not, as we've stated, a documented disparity study that proves the LGBTQ business population has been disadvantaged or disadvantaged from procurement opportunities in Baltimore City. A comprehensive study would need to be done in order for the city to document the statistical context that warrants for this program to be implemented. And additionally, a program of this magnitude would greatly enlarge the mission of Embu as it stands right now and will require an abundance of fiscal resources, HR support, program staffing, and operational deliverables. And moreover, at this time, Embu does need to first improve its sustainability and performance capacity with the existing MBE and WBE program, which is already written into law, and the BLE program, which, as Hillary has stated, has not yet been enacted. And for some reasons, it has been due to a limited fiscal and administrative resources.
Thank you, LaShella. We'll move on to the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. The Department of Finance opposes Council Bill 21-0033 as presently written. In general, the Department of Finance supports the intent of the legislation and recognizes the importance of advancing equity in procurement and inclusion of LGBTQBEs in the city's procurement process. With that said, there's three primary issues. One, as you've heard from the other agencies, there needs to be a disparity study done in order to determine what are the disparities and what are the potential solutions or resolutions for those issues. We, the Department of Finance, believes that the disparity study should be done before a new program is implemented. Number two, as Ms. Miller, the Embu chief, just indicated, this legislation will have costs associated with it for the additional staffing that's needed. Based on our discussions, we believe that the model would probably look like about 780,000 for the appropriate staff, technology, spacing, et cetera, which is a significant cost in this present environment that we're in. Third, in terms of the enactment date of the legislation, we believe that if this bill is passed, the 30-day enactment should be pushed back because of the timeframe that it's going to require for the operational processes that are going to be need to have put in place. So I don't think we're, we are not able to operationalize this legislation on a 30-day notice. It's going to take longer. And again, a disparity study should be done first so we understand what the challenges are, what the potential solutions are. Then the funding for the model to put the appropriate resources in place to effectively operationalize the legislation, i.e. the staffing, technology, software, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Raymond. We want to move on to the Baltimore City Office of Information Technology.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Nina Thumbelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. BCIT was unable to join this afternoon. They do stand by the report. They have no objection to the passage of the bill. They did want to note that they don't have an active role in the operations of the Embu office as well.
Thank you, Nina. We're going to move on to the Office of the Comptroller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Casey Callahan with the Office of the Comptroller. We stand by our report. We defer to Embu, and we support the bill's intention, but we want to defer to the administrative agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Next is the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-owned Business Development.
Yes, this is Paul Taylor. And while I support the intent of this bill, I do also, as with the Embu Office and the Office of Department of Finance, have some questions about its viability, especially when there is no disparity study to really review it. The current disparity study is mandated for every five years. And so we would have to do a disparity study to really kind of assess what the injury or challenges have been to any business that are operating right now. So I stand by our agency report. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And finally, we have the Office of Equity.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Cedric McCray, Deputy Director of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. We do support the bill in spirit because it will promote the equity and equality and serve as a portal for greater access for contractors within the LGBT community. But also, we yield to Embu and the other, and Department of Finance relates to the concerns about the disparity study. But we do support the bill in spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the agencies for giving so much context. We're going to open up two questions from the committee. Please raise your hand. You can raise your hand here, or if you want to show, using the WebX app, you can use a raise hand function on the bottom right. I'm actually just going to kick it to the committee. I noticed Councilwoman Ramos had a question. Go for it.
So thank you to all the agencies. I think all of this is very workable. You know, we do want to do a disparity study because that just makes sense. And so I want to be able to make sure that that's clear in the bill and then also think about ways to implement this as well. The only big question I had, Mr. Taylor, your report wasn't as specific as what you just said verbally in terms of your thoughts. Was there anything else that you were thinking about in terms of what else do we need to change the legislation? Because your report wasn't as specific. You're on mute, sir.
I knew I would do the mute thing. But I was just saying that the more important thing is that this, a program like this is evidence-based, and it requires a disparity study to really evaluate what the challenge is to have been in terms of discriminatory practices in procurement in Baltimore City. So I think that's the most important thing that I think needs to be done. Is there anything else specifically that you were looking at my report?
No, that was it. It was just the report wasn't as clear as what you had just stated. So thank you very much.
All right.
And it is our intent to just make very clear that we want to have a disparity study. If it's not clear in the legislation now, we'll take care of that. That was my only question. And I understand where finance is coming from, and we'll certainly want to work on those pieces. There are models, again, across the country where we may be able to lower the costs. And then also, and we'll hear some from some people today about that. And then, of course, you know, playing with the enactment date certainly makes sense as well. So I appreciate everybody's support of the intent, and I look forward to working with everyone on amendments that we can bring back to the committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. I have a quick question. Hillary, from the Law Department, alluded to a different structure out of New York where this sort of process was funneled through the Small Businesses Program. Can you elaborate a little bit on what that means, what that looks like?
I was just, I was just looking at it. For most of the entities listed in Councilwoman Ramos's attachment, they are, appear to be doing one of two things. They're either certifying LGBTQ businesses and putting them in a list of certified vendors. So for example, if you remember the emergency procurement legislation that this council, I think, addressed earlier, the goal would be to have like a group of certified businesses to whom you go when you have a need. So that is not a procurement preference. It's just putting you on a list. I'm not sure that the city has such a list in any event for anything, but if it did, there's no problem with adding people to that list for whatever reason you wanted. So if you're going that route, that's fine. That looks like that tends to be the route in some of the cities, but that's not a procurement preference. So it's from what I can tell, and I just quickly searched, you'd be on a list, like, for example, in Houston, Miami, that kind of thing. Some just, you know, look like a little more window dressing. Jersey City is just encouraging LGBTQ businesses to apply. And, you know, that's the same with Orlando. If you register, then you get email updates about when contracts are coming out. So to the extent that that gives you an advantage over other businesses, that's fine, but it's not a procurement preference such that you would pick such a business over another business in the procurement process. Then there appear to be other places like New York, Los Angeles, and Nashville that are doing it as a type of disadvantaged business. And in the charter, there's certainly the ability to do that. And one type that has been recognized is perhaps small businesses as disadvantaged, and that seems to be where LA and Nashville are putting these people in that category. I don't know what they've done in terms of studies, but it's not clear that they're actually giving those people procurement preferences. If they are doing that without a study, that really wouldn't be in line with the law. But again, a lot of these cities seem to be giving, you know, advantage in the sense of notice of when a contract comes up that might fit the needs of that business or encouraging that business to apply or helping them apply, which is very different than a procurement preference. And so as far as I can tell, there are very few that are having a procurement preference. And when they are, they're doing it as part of a group of disadvantaged businesses. For example, LA also includes as a disadvantaged business disabled veterans. So it just looks like, you know, they're, they've got sort of a larger bucket of disadvantaged businesses that includes more than just minority, and it includes some other groups. Again, I mean, there's nothing legally wrong with a procurement preference for such a disadvantaged group as long as you have a study. So hopefully, that helps.
Mr. Chair, I also have someone testifying about that.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. And I had another question. I'm sorry, I was so engrossed in what you were saying, Hillary. I started to forget my question. With regard to, I mean, of course, this is geared toward helping small businesses. So to kind of piggyback onto my initial question, this is geared toward helping small businesses, disadvantaged businesses. How can we ensure that maybe some of the larger businesses that don't need to, need a preference are maybe not given that preference? And I can't think of any offhand. I don't know of any LGBTQ businesses that are large, but let's say we had a large contractor who frequently gets contracts with the city. There's no indication that they're LGBTQ. They don't necessarily need the help, but a small business may. How do we differentiate between the two? And would that sort of small businesses approach used out of New York adequately address that difference between a small business and maybe just an LGBTQ small business?
Yeah, from a legal standpoint, I think that's what your disparity study would help you figure out. Is it large LGBTQ-type businesses? Or is it small? Like, I guess that would be more fact-based. I really couldn't speak to the actual, like, paperwork that might go into this. I'm sure somebody else at the hearing could in terms of, like, processing it. I'm sure right now, we have businesses that are both minority and women's businesses. So perhaps there's some parallel there.
Mr. Chair, I think it's clear in the bill that some of these businesses that are going for things like this have to choose one. They can't be, you know, if they're going through these processes, they have to choose, you know, they're going to be women-owned, they're going to be minority-owned, they're going to be LGBT. You know what I mean? So that's got to be clear. And if it's not clear in the bill, we'll make it clear. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the bill sponsor and to the agencies. I think this is important legislation, given the, you know, Baltimore as a time has been late on LGBTQ issues. So I appreciate Councilmember Ramos putting this forward. And I might have missed this, but I'm curious. So then, what is the path to getting a disparity study? How long does that take? What are the costs associated? Like, how quickly could that be done? And how does that process get initiated? I'm not sure who that's a question to, actually. Maybe it's Laura.
Director Raymond, this is LaShella from Embu to assist with answering that question. But yes, the disparity study, the way that the city initially did it, it was procured and it was contracted. And they did it through a competitive process, and it went to the lowest bidder. And that consultant does the work, the legwork, to lead the study. So that something of that magnitude can be very costly. And again, because Baltimore City has never had a proven statistical context with this population being disadvantaged, the study would be a lot more extensive because you would have to create the data and build the data to establish the narratives to support the fact that this program is needed for the LGBTQ population. And just to also provide some insight to Councilwoman Ramos as it relates to the classification and how they would be designated, Hillary is correct, that would be established through the disparity study in terms of how it would be categorized and how the businesses would identify their services, ethnicity, and things of that nature. Very similar as it has been written, it will mirror the current program. And so if Embu is going to house a program of that magnitude, we definitely need to be effective, efficient, and be able to administer the quality service that would be needed. And again, we are looking at an exercise to facilitate that process. Also, us keeping in mind and being realistic with where we are now, we still have several targets that must be met with the current MBE/WBE program. And so we do have to progressively look at where we are now in order to determine how we would move forward with this program.
So, no, totally understand, certainly, the competing interests and pressures. It's just, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg, right? Like, if you don't do the study, then you don't have the data. Then you don't have the data. So what's the justification for the study? So I just want to be clear, like, is your position that we shouldn't do a disparity study or that we should do a disparity study and utilize that to determine whether there's a need to expand the program or not?
Yes, you would have, definitely have to do the disparity study because you do have to prove that there is a disparity with that population as it relates to procurement, competitive contracts, and opportunities.
Right, so your position, like, you would support doing a disparity study?
Yes, we would support doing the disparity study.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and this is Henry Raymond. I would just like to add that we're anticipating that the cost of a disparity study could be near the ballpark of $1 million and could take 12 to 24 months for completion because these types of reports are very, very detailed. And the main reason you want to do a disparity study, and I'm not trying to steal the Law Department's thunder, but in part, it's to protect the city from potential lawsuits. If we were just to do a program without doing the research and having that analytical information to support the changes that we'd be making to support the LGBTQBE community, you know, those business entities. So I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Councilwoman Ramos.
Yeah, just to follow up, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. Mr. Raymond, in your report, you don't have that cost in your report. You have staff and investigations. And so I took the investigation to be the disparity study. Is that not the case?
Councilwoman Ramos, that is not the case. The $1 million is on page two of the report, fifth paragraph of page two, where we indicate could take, one, and I'm reading verbatim, could take one to two years and cost at least $1 million.
Okay, because I didn't see that in the chart. So you had made that separate. I guess I didn't see. Okay, because I didn't see that in the chart. So you had made that separate. I guess I didn't see it.
Yeah, the chart relates to the operating costs for the personnel. The million dollars for the study is a separate cost.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? I don't see any other council members on the line. So with that, we'll move on to public testimony. And I see one person, Jonathan Lovitz, with his hands up. Please use the raise hand function on the bottom right if you are in the meeting and we'll call on you. So we'll start off with Jonathan Lovitz. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember O'Dad, and many of you who have co-sponsored this bill. My name is Jonathan Lovitz. I'm Senior Vice President of the National LGBT Chamber of Commerce. We're the certifying body that's now helped, to your point about the need for why this is needed across the country, or the entire Fortune 500, 14 federal agencies, 35 cities and states, and including the city of Baltimore per the executive order in 2018, the Maryland Public Services Commission as of 2020, and as of just last week, most recently, the city of Houston becoming one of the most diverse cities to require certification for their programs. This is necessary for reasons that you'll hear from several of the other business owners who are on the line. But I want to clear up a couple of key vital elements that might be confusing or might be misinterpreted. We are 100% in agreement about the disparity study. That's how you get, you cannot fix what you don't study. The tricky part is, and why this legislation is so necessary and why it's been replicated all over the country with similar framing, is the LGBT community is not tracked by the SBA, the Commerce Department, or any other federal agency in the way other minorities are to zip code. You have to build it so we can come. When the way that this has worked in dozens of cities across the country is exactly as the bill lines up, the NGLCC will provide at zero cost. And there have been zero cost implications around the country that we can find. Free verification of suppliers, the free transfer of data, the free support to the IT department to add the checkbox, which I believe has already been added per the executive order several years ago, so that we can begin collecting demographic data so that the city can then ask those important questions about utilization, about barriers to entry. So we've done this all over the country for the last several years. And we, there is not a single set aside or goal set anywhere in the country because we are just beginning to study this. California's Public Utilities is required by law to set its very first goal this year. And that's after five years of careful study and analysis that this bill would allow us to do right here in Baltimore. So it's so important to remember that this is step one in a very long, multi-year process. But we do not believe that the cost will be nearly as high as anticipated because we've provided it without red tape and without additional costs to any city and state who's required it. In fact, the Chief Procurement Officer of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts said to the National Association of State Procurement Officers, this has been a cost-saving mechanism for them because the entire process has been online streamlined and done through a free MOU partnership between the national, local chambers and the city and state. We also want to make sure that we point out who this is really benefiting. There's always concerns, as it should be, that if there are women, people of color who are also LGBTQ, don't they have an avenue into these programs? Of course they do, but now we need to be able to identify all of who they are. And you'll hear about that in the testimony from the other speakers. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I thought you were asking a question. I didn't want to.
No, you had, I'll give you another 10 seconds to wrap up.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. And to that point, I want to be clear that we are doing this in solidarity and with the full support of the NMSDC, which certifies African American Hispanic businesses around the country, as well as the U.S. Hispanic Chamber, WeBank, and other certifying bodies who agree with us. This is not eating away at anyone else's pie. This is inviting people to the table who have previously been never invited before. And until you put people's names on the invitation, they don't know that seat at the table is for them. So let's let's do in Baltimore what we're doing all over the country, just in time for the full federal inclusion of LGBT businesses, which we have heard from the Biden administration is coming.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next, we're going to hear from Betsy Cerule. Betsy, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I am the co-founder of the Maryland LGBT Chamber of Commerce and the CEO of Adnet Accountant located in Baltimore City. Thank you so much for all the council members for introducing Amari's LGBTQ Procurement Preference Act. My company has been LGBT certified through NGLCC since 2012. This certification allowed us to finally get into large corporations who now require LGBT businesses as part of their diversity spend goals. As a result, Adnet is working with multiple large corporations to provide staffing services for their internal needs. And most importantly, our subcontractors on their government contracts. Adnet and my leadership was fully vetted before the contract was awarded. There are no free rides because I am LGBT. We won because of past performance, capability, and a reputation of going above and beyond for our customers. As an LGBT business owner, I have experienced my fair share of jokes and hateful rhetoric because of my sexuality. Our community is resilient, and there is so much business talent across the spectrum of diverse groups of Asian, Black, disabled, Hispanic, and women who are dedicated to delivering our very best. We don't want to handout. We want a seat at the table. By adding LGBT businesses to procurement requirements, there is an opportunity when we walk into meetings for a closed minded person to see the talent and professionalism our community represents. That interaction, I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Okay, that interaction could bring us one step closer to more acceptance towards the LGBTQ community. We are human beings, not freaks. And I am here to advocate for the up and coming LGBT owned businesses here in the city who need a jumpstart to thrive post COVID. Over the past month, we have listened to the Vatican unwilling to recognize same sex marriages as well as heartbreaking rise in hate crimes. I ask you today to lead the way in Maryland and the country to declare that LGBTQ owned businesses are relevant, recognized, and welcome to Baltimore City. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Betsy. We're going to move next to Rafael Ortiz.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Burnett, and everyone else here that's taking the time to be here with us today. Can y'all hear me clearly?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you. So I want to talk to you from the heart. I am from Puerto Rico. I am someone who's definitely benefited from, you know, male privilege. And in most rooms, people think I'm white. So I've been in areas where sometimes I'm at the table when people are saying things that are off color, not only about the LGBT community, but about the minority community as well. And that's something that I have benefited from in a certain way because I've had to keep quiet. For me, it's the time to be quiet has passed. I came from a religious background where it made me hate who I was. I almost committed suicide when I was 18. And even though I can say that I come in a certain way from a privileged background, that doesn't mean I'm unable to see that I need to be a champion for others, just not for myself. And for myself, as a past executive, as someone who has a background in medicine and a degree in biomedical science, I understand that these are a lot of areas, not only in business, but academia and in the world where it's kind of led by a certain group of people. So for me, this led me to open up a business. Why? Because I understand that although I've been able to succeed, there are others in the LGBTQIAI community that have not. And it is my responsibility as a human, as a business person, as someone who wants to make a difference, to not only build my own table, but to pull those behind me, to pull those people who, thank you, and to pull those up with me that are scared to speak up because that representation matters. So for our community, for me, be able to say, I stand here proud. Having had federal and state certifications already, I understand the scrutiny that goes in it, and I am tried and true. All I'm asking is for an opportunity to be at a table where you know that you can decide if I'm the best person for the job. And that is what we want today. I thank you for your time from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Rafael. Next, we've got Terrence Therwee. Did I get that right?
Yeah, Terrence three, like three and eight. I know it's the complication. Yeah, last name.
Full name.
I don't know. I wanted to take my wife's last name, Hale, when we got married, but whatever. Hello, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to testify today. And thank you to my councilwoman, the one and only Adet Ramos, for sponsoring this bill. I am the older brother of Amari, the namesake of this bill. He was a transgender man that started his business in the face of physical harassment and discrimination. Thankfully, he had a loving family that would support and fight him, fight for him all the way through. Before his death, he became a certified painter by Civic Works and started doing, started painting homes professionally in Baltimore City. Sadly, he died by suicide after experiencing being physically attacked on the job and in public multiple times in 2019. His his birthday would have been tomorrow, his 25th birthday, March 25. Anyways, it's passed, this bill will codify the use of LGBT businesses to engage in contracting for city products in service needs. Why is this needed? For the government, it allows more companies to participate in city contracting opportunities and lower costs for taxpayers. And for businesses, it allows those who are traditionally locked out due to implicit and explicit discrimination to engage in city contracting opportunities, promoting small business growth, development, and employment. Despite societal advancements, there is still cultural biases that exist that hinder LGBT businesses, especially those owned by Black and transgender individuals like Amari. Transgender and Black LGBT individuals face even greater wealth gaps that can be directly correlated to their income, networking opportunities, and discrimination in employment. What this bill does not do is take away opportunities from other designated minorities. This is a concern that was brought up when this bill was proposed on a state level. Existing targeted demographics will or should maintain their current target contracting levels. I ask that you support this bill, or I'm speaking in favor of it. And lastly, two organizations that Amari was involved in and a part of, or the Baltimore Safe Haven and Trans Alliance, they also support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. I don't see any additional hands. I'm going to leave testimony open for a couple more seconds before we move to the phone lines. If you'd like to testify, please click the raise hand function at the bottom right of your screen. And we'll be sure to recognize you. I'm seeing no testimony on this line. I'll see if we have any folks calling in. We have one caller. For that caller, you'll hear two beeps. When you hear two beeps, if you'd like to testify, please state your name and we'll give you two minutes.
I have no testimony.
I just froze.
I have no testimony.
Thank you. Right? Okay, we are seeing no further testimony. We understand there's a fair share of work we need to do on this, on this piece of legislation. We're not going to vote this out today. I really want to thank the folks who testified for giving some insight on your personal experience and your insight. I really want to thank the the agencies for putting a lot of thought and insight into the steps we need to take to make sure that we get done what we need to get done, to make sure that this bill accomplishes what it's trying to accomplish. I especially want to thank Councilwoman Ramos for bringing this forward, for highlighting this issue. I think we all realize this is an issue, this is an issue. And I look forward to to figuring out what we need to do to make sure that this works. So with that, are there any other comments, questions, or thoughts from the committee? Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank again my colleagues in the committee and also agencies. It's clear that we're headed in the right direction, and I really look forward to working with all of you. And to Mr. Lovitz, we'll be following up with you as well to try to get you involved. And Terrence Therwee, you know, thank you so much for bringing this to me. And also, you know, your passion about it. And certainly we'll remember Amari on his birthday tomorrow. And Mr. Ortiz, great to talk with you. And again, thank you all colleagues, and I look forward to the work session when when we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. With that, this hearing is in recess, and we will schedule a work session to be announced at a later date. Thank you all.